It's six o'clock, I'll call the speaking tour. It's our regular month in need. Mr. Braden, you're here with communication.
Yes, Mr. Braden. Heavenly Father, Lord, we do thank you this day, Lord. Thank God for all your blessings and love, Father, we just... Lord, ask you be with us tonight, Lord, as we carry out this county business, Lord. Father, pray, Lord, that each and every decision made here tonight will be honored and pleasing you, Father. Father, just still with us now through the rest of the day, and lead God, great and everything. We did, of course, use name of Brian.
Let's take the pledge, your lady, your lady sent it?
We dedicate to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments, anybody? Anything you want to say?
I'm here to testify on behalf of this. Harrison, she was here last year on the back path, you can tell her on the home. Now see what that's marked through there.
No, that's...
Appalachian Mountains marked that off as a pile of junk, obviously called it. Well, Miss Harris and her husband took that pile of junk and made it into a home. They're asking for $600 in back taxes, had drips written off. Is there any way that y'all can waive that? She's willing to pay some of it. Of the $600. She was not in the home.
She wasn't living in it at the time?
No.
Why don't you let us check in with the tax specialist's office?
Yeah, 'cause since she's not here and...
Why don't you let us look into it, Mr. Todd, and we'll find out what we can do and can't do.
Okay. Because last time she was here, she was noticing, didn't actually understand, and tell you what really was going on. The mobile home was like, was fixing to be torn down, and they took it and made a home out of it.
What years are the back taxes on?
I think for thirteen, uh... Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I believe.
And the mobile home was non-memorable at least times?
It was non-memorable. It had caught fire, I guess, inside. Like I said, Appalachian Mountains had voted off this pile of junk. And Mrs. Harris' brother tears down mobile home, so he did before he passed away. She bought the mobile home from her brother, which was given to him or sold to him by the daughter of Miss Bryant. And Mrs. Bryant actually owes the back taxes on it.
When was, when was the purchase?
God, I don't know. Now, when did you purchase?
About a year and a half ago.
She's, she's willing to pay those taxes.
Oh, you've only owned it a year and a half, you said. But is it taxes on the mobile home or mobile home and property?
Just the mobile home.
Just on the mobile home?
Just on the mobile home. So in the Appalachian Mountains, they voted off this pile of junk, because they took it and made a home out of it. So the county wouldn't have got nothing. She's willing to pay some in order to get it transferred to where she can start paying taxes here often.
All right, appreciate it, Mr. Todd. Anyone else? Any other comment? Ms. Todd?
Well, you want to talk about the pipe before I get started?
Yes, I will, if you'd want me to.
I'd like for you to.
Okay, I sure will.
And I've been...
We put, we put in a pipe, I made the decision myself, and I called some more and asked them about it. I had Miss Todd, she's driving a roller school bus now, and it taking more room to turn in. I went over personally myself and looked at the pipe. The pipe was caving in a little on the outside, and the tires were running right onto the edge of it. And personally myself, I thought the pipe needed to be placed, or the thirty-foot pipe, to give her more room about turning in and out. It is on county property, it's not on private property, and I done it for the safety of Jeff Davis County School Bus. Look here, if that school bus run off the edge, and it popped a hub or something other, and then their tires run off. The school bus down the road, actually picked up some kids, who thought would it be? It would be my responsibility, and I would do it again if I had to do it again. I just want you to know, now, Miss Todd.
Okay, I paid taxes on that piece of land out there for twenty-eight years. I've never asked y'all for nothing. This, this pipe did not benefit me personally. I could get in and out in my car, and I got in and out in that school bus, but it was not safe.
Correct.
Okay, but I did. I'm really upset about the way I have been treated about this. First off, it took almost six or seven weeks to get somebody out there. Second thing is, nobody said nothing to me about, you know, it wasn't gonna be done, other than the county employees coming to me telling me that Mr. Lewis was not gonna put that pipe in there. As a matter of fact, they told me that out there yesterday, some of his employees, why he was out there, after he left. Now, I'm gonna tell you something, unless I have a misunderstanding, and I ain't the smartest cookie in the jar, I promise you that. But I can tell you one thing, I think me and the other citizens of this county pays his salary. And when you can't look out for a school bus, then they stop on it.
Well, I said I meant it because of safety, I think we needed to, and that's the reason I did it.
I don't think it has anything to do with the bus. I think it's a personal issue between me and him, and if he's got one, I'd be outside with him. But I'm gonna tell you something, I'm tired of it. Then, on top of that, he stood over there yesterday with his little buddies. It took six people that works for him to put in one pipe. I don't know, that's my tax dollars. That was ridiculous, number one. So he stood over there with one of his little buddies, and they stood off over there, and the hour and minute that he drove off, that same buddy come up to me, said, "You reckon you can get in and out in that school bus now?" Let me tell you something, I've been driving school bus since seventy-eight. I've been talking more about school bus than most of you will ever know. And I'm gonna just tell you why, I'll lead in on it. I do not appreciate being treated this way. This man has the personality of a donkey, you can't talk to him. Every time I called down there to find out about when you're gonna put my pipe in, Buck said there's forty people on the list ahead of me. Well, if there was forty people on the list, why did you have six out there yesterday putting in one pipe?
I think we got it took care of, Miss Todd, if you have any more trouble, if you...
Well, I'm mad, I'm really mad.
I understand that.
I will not be treated this way by no county employee that I helped pay this salary. And like I said, if it's a personal issue, I'd be outside after meeting.
I think it's all taken care of now, appreciate it. Anyone else?
My gender, am I...
No, any public comment?
Public, yeah, that's all I want to say. The land building and all, you know, I've called you several times, and, you know, I've fixed people's ways up. I get a mattress, something like that, somebody moves out of a little place, you gotta get rid of all the trash they put out there, and I went and like... Yeah, he's got them apartments across the class, who's over there, and the lady moved out, and it was fixed out, you wouldn't even... So I cleaned all that up and loaded on my trailer and went out there to throw it away, and they said, "No, you're not here." You know, I says, "It's household stuff, but you got to do something with it." And they, they said, "They don't take mattresses." Well, I was out there the other day, and they put mattresses out there. And why is it when I pull up there, they won't say something to me about it? You know, I'm, I'm just trying to help somebody out, get rid of the junk. I put a metal roof on a man's house over here, and it had a little metal flange, a jingle part, you know, and wood, I burned it. It had a house, and I just built a fire and burned off half of them, but I went into Pat Dixon, where everybody said, "That's where construction trash goes. You take the business of Pat Dixon, and they'll take care of it out there." Pulled up there, and he says, "No, we don't sell trailers no more." Well, all I got is three bags of little house insulation. You know, that big bag, but that backside doesn't tie it up, you know? And only three bags of that and some metal e-drive. He said, "You ain't done nothing here." That's when I called you again, you said you was gonna call me back and find out what's going on. I don't even know where I can put trash. If I'm gonna pay to haul it off out of the county, and it's just county stuff, if it was somewhere else, you...
Is it, is it your personal trash, or is this contract trash?
It's where I put the person's roof on his house. And I, you know, they pay just like everybody else does, they, you know, right there, it's not... You know, one lady was so nice, every time I pull up there, she said, "Make sure that it ain't hanging over the outside so they can get it." You know, the bags you want, which number you want it in, I'll put it in there, you know? And they, they served pretty good. I can promise you that, now, my nurse never made four up there. I called, if I had Preston's personal number, I'd have had a waiting man sitting out there talking together out there, you know? Yeah, that was house stuff over there, that, that much, when I called Preston, because it was mattresses. I had mattresses that was rotten, you never want to. I had a friend that tried to throw away a TV, and couldn't throw a TV in there.
I had a problem with Snipesville with this thing going on, but you called me about that, and I was supposed to call Mr. Rock about it, but it did slip my mind, I apologize for that. But, uh, we'll try, we'll see what we, what we can come up with on that deal, but this contract stuff, I'm not sure one percent on that period.
If I can, you know, we do this so cheap anyway, you know, a metal roof, everybody, yeah, dozens, you know, around. But if we go out of county, and I'm here sitting in this county, yeah, I'm going out of town. If I'm doing it out of county, they put a dumpster, that guy can't take it up.
They won't let you throw mail out there?
Yeah.
There's a metal dumpster?
It's a metal dumpster. I mean, the one lady I go to now, you know, I run into her, and she just says, "But we don't sell wood." And I said, "No, ma'am, that wood ain't coming off, I got a big fire pit, I put that in." I burn all the wood, and just a little scrap metal, ain't no monster metal. You know, you have strips that you cut off, it ain't, it ain't... It ain't nothing there, but they say if they want to treat me crazy out there when I pull up there, you know, I'm human, I mean, I can be talked to, right? But, you know, he turned around, he got on his phone and walked away.
Where's Dr. Sanders'?
That's Pat Dixon. Everybody told me Pat Dixon where construction, where he goes, everybody said that every time I've done...
How was, how was...
They should have, exactly.
They, they should be nice anyway.
Yes, they should.
I mean, they should be nice. I mean, if I was out there being stomping ugly and cussing, then, I mean, yeah, cuss back, you know?
We'll look into this.
But I need to know where I'm gonna put the trash, you know, because it's all right here.
We do have to get back with you on items such as what we would classify as contract, like vehicles and stuff like that.
Everybody knows you don't put change in.
Yeah, that has to...
That's, that's where you have to split it, right there, and it costs, it costs too, you know? But I'm taking a little light gauge metal and taking off out there, and they...
They should take it, there's no, there's no reason for them not taking that.
Yeah, as long as I don't put it in the bad way and grab it out and hang it over the thing, I'll make you feel it.
We'll, we'll make sure we check into that, appreciate it.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Anyone else?
Um, Lucy and I, Mama Lucy. I brought you guys some hot dogs last time I told you all. I told you I was gonna bring a hot dog, and y'all said, "Why didn't you bring him?" And I said, "Well, I'll bring him next time," so I did. So the colossal are the kind that we're gonna sell at Mama Lucy's. They're not waiting, now, they're gonna be hot, I mean, I don't think it's cold, but, hi, Sherry.
Better wait now.
But it might be cold, because she's getting out of my way. I'm here for Mama Lucy's too, on 390 West Almond Highway. I was here for the civic center last time, and I had gotten the wrong application, so Sherry introduced me to the new pouring one. So I'm here to plead my case that I am looking for the pouring license for Mama Lucy's out there on Almond Highway. And you was here for the...
You, you're on down on sixteen, we'll, we'll come to that in just a little while. You're on the agenda, so we'll talk to you in just a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome, guys.
Number sixteen, right. Anyone else? Any public comment?
Now, you took me off the agenda, right, but I'll still have to get the say later. I'll give you the talk now.
If you want to do your public comment, you need to do it right now.
Okay, I'm back up here again about the ditch, do we have everything in order?
We do.
Or we move forward to this ditch?
I think I'm written keep Friday, you were the last one that I had to sign. And then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I was out of town at school, and I had told Commissioner Cruz that I wanted to get with Mr. Lewis to cover some things before he just sent out a crew and just went out there, because I want y'all all to be kept in the room. So I know that's been out of town this way, so I hope to get with you after the meeting here tomorrow. And was it possible to start over your property?
And another thing I'd like to, there's a couple of big holes in that area, and they're just mosquito traps. I think I talked to the board on that, that can fill that in, but a lot of that to burn.
I was going to mention that, but I thought when we went out there, we'd call you, so you can just get there and talk about what areas you were talking about.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else? We'll move right on to aisle number five, approve all minutes for April tenth, thirteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-fourth. Are there motions?
Make motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Aisle number six, approve monthly, monthly finances. Are there motions?
I'll make motion.
Take it. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Row superintendent, Mr. Robert Lewis. Row for the phone, if you will.
I, uh... I think I, Mr. Benjamin is going to request to be here, Mr. Benjamin, I, uh, relax open up for you to tell me exactly what you want. I got y'all a packet made up, but I appreciate you being here, ready to do it. Thank you, and if you got any questions, y'all got any questions, I'd like to go after...
Right, okay, and, uh, I'd like to say also that, uh, I see you've been out towards the hospital road with the, what's it called, bat wing mower, I guess?
Yes.
They really look good. And, uh, the mower and the grab, it just makes the whole grill, the whole highway just pink up, and that's a good job. But what I'm saying is, uh, what, is there anything that we need to do to help you? The, you know what I'm saying, is your operators, is they certified, uh, heavy machine operators, do we need to... How, is everything, is there anything that we can help you, plus, uh, equipment wise?
Okay, uh, Mr. Benjamin, I got y'all packing in there, and I had, I had spoken to, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman and, uh, Mr. Chairman, about, you know, we don't have the ministrator, all that was in place, but, you know, all that's going on, and y'all taking care of that now. But, uh, I had put them in, and I put y'all list on there, and shaped about each of our equipment, model of it, what we need the most, and, uh, I know y'all gotta work that out, because y'all...
All right.
Know what we can do and what we can't do.
And I'll tell you something else I really want to do, I had, I had mentioned to Ricky, now, uh, I feel better if I could meet all of your employees, and maybe, I would think like maybe one Friday, I don't know if y'all were on Friday, on Thursday, knock them off by twelve o'clock, and pay them, you know, and let's, let's have lunch or do something other together. And let's, I want to, I really like, if we could meet each other, a lot of times when you, you meet people, and they see where you're coming from, you have better employees, you know what I'm saying? It makes you feel better when somebody like care, because a lot of times you dunk, they, they, uh, tear your equipment, and you get mad, but, you know, it's, it's what I'm talking about. So I would like to do that very soon, you know, I'd like to meet everybody, and let's get acquainted with them.
I think that's very fine, yes, sir.
Yeah, cook fish or something, or hamburger, hot dog, whatever, maybe we eat her hot dog, whatever.
Mama Lucy. Come meet up Mama Lucy's.
Yeah, Mama Lucy.
On the certification, Mr. Benjamin, you know, uh, you know, the county sets a salary, it's hard to get certified.
Yeah, like, like a machine operator, yeah, we want to adjust that, we want to try to adjust that, because you need, you need some, see, it makes it difficult, if you, if you... If you knock, that mach, that equipment is really dangerous. And if you're not good, your experience, when you forget, you're a world of mess, yeah.
Most of our, we work in six less than what we give when we started, when I started here, almost here, but, uh, most of our, uh, machine operators has been here for several, several years. We have some gamble truck drivers, we don't have two trucks around here, and I'll let y'all work on that. Our grass oper, operators is, uh, is our starting paint help, and there are all the manual labor help, you know? And we have to have them, it's like when you go out laying pipe or whatever, you got two dump truck drivers, a pipe truck driver, a flagman, and then a backhoe operator drives a little boy, and, uh, you know, they do have schools for flagging, which I'm going to ask y'all permission to get. It don't cost the county anything, they stand up here, they teach our guys proper way to flag.
Right, right.
Because these days, you don't walk on highway without flagging, which is, it's just too many.
Yeah, because that's a job to itself, like, you know, construction.
But, uh, speaking of the grass cutting, y'all, uh, got us very badly needed mowers to cut grass with, we appreciate that. It's gonna make the grass better. We cut it a pile of time last year with our really, really wild mowers, takes them out to every day, but I feel like this year, I'm gonna be able to, be able to do it.
That's, that's, that's pretty good, well, like, I'm not concerned, I really want to meet all the employees, they have, uh, one day I could, oh, after, after noon, or after my birthday, and just...
Got you. And you other gentlemen, I, like I say, the packet was, uh, it was, uh, it was in real trouble, being my secretary's had surgery, and we, uh, rushed it together. But, uh, I've got y'all up to date from January first, up to the day, uh, and, uh, what work? We looking at ahead, we got a lot of roads, over the years, the roads, it needs to be worked on, and what we have done since January first. Just to let y'all know, every single thing, we go out and they're very well documented, and we got paperwork coming there any time, that y'all will look at, uh, what all the requests, everything that's called in over there, it's running, the work is working, and it's called in, so we naturally try to document everything. Anytime you have, any request, anything to bring up, uh, don't lie, I'll call or ask, uh...
Did you have a chance, Mr. Lewis, to, to price on what you think the health of the ditches are?
I do, uh, it's in the, Mr. Jerry, it's on the agenda for y'all to know, correct? So I hope you information, if you want to look at that right quick while I'm here, so that y'all get to it, so I can go back through that. We got a price from, um, Atlanta, the best, I know you've checked in on the, the time, but, uh, we got a price for engines shipped down here, and it's, uh, explained all what they're gonna do with it, what they're putting in it, uh, the price of the engines, and I got a price from, uh, Fleet Island City Truck Center over there, which is a lot of freight liners, if they put the engine in, and then Mr. Jerry Vass give us the, um, price on it up here, if they set the engine in, it's considerable savings on it, y'all have to look at that and figure out what y'all would do on that. I know we did the best thing that you done, but we saved a lot of money, we saved the county also. I hope it's there, I got it highlighted on the two different prices.
So the eighty-five hundred for an engine, coal charge, or three thousand, we will get back, so the engine's gonna cost fifty-five hundred?
Yes, and then the, uh...
Was the, I thought the progress was going through the block.
Any, yes, but they still gonna, they still have to have a coal charge, and the three fifty on there, which we have by day, and we have to get the truck towed, that'll be coming off.
That's what the payment we've got, now, that's, that's one...
That's not true. Turn it over.
Yeah, that's what we're paying in, Mr. Ben.
Okay, okay.
Yes. We're running two dump trucks right now, we're trying to get one repaired for me, and the next time with the commission, before y'all come in, before you and Mr. Ricky come in, uh, they had, uh, worked it out last year, they got us a dump truck, well, good new dump truck to work with, and, uh, on the other equipment. I, I quit, I got it always with their party, yes, it's, it's real, uh, we struggled with it, but, uh...
Mr. Lewis, something, uh, a question for irrigation workers and all from Savannah Clutch, have you ever priced that?
I had knocked out one, Mr. Ben.
They're a lot cheaper than what I get. We go down there, we do them, we do them, or either if they got one with shift, they just trade them. Yeah, it's a lot cheaper, you might want to check, Savannah Clutch, I got the number at the house.
Uh, please, for everyone here, please, that is just an essence, we tried to find, who's in, and, you know, it's hard to find, but that don't mean, you know, asking for this in, with the shop, for what we need to do.
I said eighty-five hundred, too, you gonna find it if it's cheap as I found it.
Yeah, and they, they've repaired, they've received, and guaranteed for a hundred and eighty days, and then Mr. Vass also guaranteed his work for...
It is labor, it's eighteen pitches, so that one's four thousand, but basically we're gonna do it by, there's thirteen, now eighty-nine, but... A little five thousand dollars, eleven, three fifty, great.
And we need to double check before we do do that, if y'all decide on that, to make sure, you know, you know, you find a print on the coal charges or anything. Most of the time, they even, as it's charged, it can take a five hour, you don't have to pay it, but, uh, whatever y'all decide, we'll double check on anything that may be returned back to them. Of course, anytime... Of course, anything over a hundred dollars, I call this year, you let y'all know, we can handle that, so...
Thank you, Mr. Little.
That all.
One more question, I, on that bike hose, everybody said, whoa, I...
Your brother's having a bike, David, though.
Yeah, the, I guess it's the Calipso?
Yes.
They say it's whoa, I, I'm trying to figure out. See, another man whoa, might be another man's treasure, you know what I'm saying?
Definitely is.
So, I'm trying to figure, is the engine bad, or is y'all going forward to drive, or just leaking seal? Can you put ten, fifteen thousand dollars in and have a good track, or it just ain't working?
And I'd be straight up with y'all, it's been, uh, trapped, I, I have to look back to what model they had to be, what they had for them. Uh, this has some really bad look, in fact, it's been wrecked a couple times, uh, just about a year ago. Uh, transmission slipped in, pinning, it banged, it got metal, it's a terrible shape, uh...
See, I have a nine-four model there.
But you probably...
It's an old one, and I love it, but it took me off the shelf. And I, Mark Buckland, my transition without Buckland, I spent five thousand dollars on it. And he, he went and had the transmission rebuilt.
And how, how many hours have you run this?
Nah, I've been going probably about at least three or four days a week.
Now, this, this wheel back there that, that we've got, runs from time we get here to time we get off. It runs at night, when I want one call.
Y'all didn't know?
It, it, it runs weekends.
Y'all do, too.
It's on emergency call, I mean, it runs every day, it don't say it never. It's our main tube, our hot lane, removal trees, the nine-one-one, four, four more. It does, we do everything in that factory.
You start playing up dumpers, I'd say.
One part of the table, get it, get it in, pretty much safe.
Uh, we talked about this meeting, I, I would advise you to come by and let's look at it.
There you go, yeah, I, thank you.
How about that?
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Robert, what about the road I have, Pettingill, three forty-one? What, what we add on that?
Mr. Jerry, did you meet with them this week?
I sure did.
Uh, do you need to call me on that, or is that...
Yes, they, they was gonna check and see what it would cost. They was gonna try to get some estimates of what it would cost, if they just went ahead and contracted the rest of it to be done. And they both get with, give you or me one, and, and see.
You know what, the part, the part you're talking about there, it might be a good idea on some of these projects where, like them doing all the ditches, and when you gotta have really professionals, like sub some of that stuff out, like Dave Beach, somehow that's more of the experience with it, you know what I'm saying? I mean, just a thought, yeah, just a thought.
But, uh, it's like I told them, we really, well, Brad and I were there both, uh, really truly, as much total stuff as we got, we really, we really have got the time to finish the road right now. And if they could, if they got some money in their budget, they could spend on it, that's exactly what we need to do, I think.
Yes, and Mr. Jerry, this, people around this table probably now, two cents worth, you know, this is for Mr. Ricky and Mr. Ben to come on, and I would, yeah. And, you know, seasons were made that probably none of y'all even...
We didn't have a man doing the road, was here.
Well, they such...
Wet land, and we have to put some restrictions, we don't have a foot, pump water, mud hogs, uh, we're just not fed up.
Really, really, we should've never did the road.
Yeah.
And, I mean, all that was before I come here, so I came here, that, we just got to try to work through it.
Right. Mr. Ricky, what, what did you say you needed on that, uh, what was you wanting on that, that meeting?
How much, how much, uh, what we add on, how much we would take to finish it, kind of?
Yeah, we out, uh, I got paperwork on it, but we probably hauled out seven hundred or eight hundred loads and hauled in. We had to muck every bit of ten foot deep to get the DM2 improvements over, and we had to pack it back, these guys here, remember that. We, we hauled that in, but one dump truck running sometime, at most, two dump trucks, some nuts down, one dump truck.
Well, that'd take a pile later to finish it at the Red Roof Track, won't it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Now, that would have got us up, so...
I'm gonna come, I went down and...
That project, me, seven or eight dump trucks, uh, being as long as it finished. You're setting wrong, and you're spreading dirt.
Right. Well, I told them up there the other day, I told Brad and them, and, uh, Grant and them, Mr. Cooper, that we would need at least, at least five, if we don't have to haul the dirt. Leave them, leave five, and us run our two, and give us seven, that would keep the estimate appropriate.
Yes.
But, he's supposed to get some figures together and get back, but he couldn't get you.
I appreciate y'all willing to help, try and give us some help, and I, uh, appreciate what y'all already done for us, and, uh, we got a lot ahead of us, and a long way to go, but I appreciate y'all working on these vehicles, and I appreciate your time for tonight.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Watson, fire team, proof of the last fire station group to prepare.
Good evening, last month, I've come to y'all to talk to you about, uh, the fire station on Pat Dixon Road, which is the city fire station. But, in nineteen ninety-four, when the city took over the county, the county commission that time closed our county fire department down, and moved everything to our fire station. So, basically, the fire station, the city fire station, is the city fire station headquarters and the county fire station headquarters. Over that building, we have five, or seven bays, and we have five trucks in there that belong to the county. So, there's quite a bit of stuff over there belonging to the county, and I asked y'all, if y'all consider helping us, uh, to regroup that building. Uh, we opened a bid the following morning, uh, and I got back on the agenda to let y'all know exactly what the, the bid was. The bid, the, the city's effort was twenty-two thousand, three hundred, twenty-nine dollars to regroup that building. That building's over thirty years old, and...
Twenty-two thousand, what?
Twenty-two thousand, three hundred, twenty-nine dollars.
What building is this, you said?
This is fire headquarters on Pat Dixon Road.
Pat Dixon?
They actually started work today. Uh, that, that building was in desperate need of, of regrouping, because, uh, we do have, on top of that building, we have antennas and things, and we have half our radio, so, I mean, they're just, uh, it, it needed it. So, the regrouping, and we put new, new, uh, insulation, and a new roof on, uh, and replacing one door that, that needed replacement front. So, I'm just asking y'all now, since we know what it is, if y'all, I did talk to, to county minister before he left, and he said he should pull money out of contingency to help do this. So, I didn't have it in my budget at the county side, but he said I could pull money contingency part to do this, so I'm here to ask y'all if y'all willing to help with this project.
Is this all the same building that the city's having, we went to?
Yes, from the city's, yes, sir.
That's the total price.
That's the total price.
That's what we helped.
Yeah, can y'all help with that?
It's the general now?
Are they wanting to pay half of this right here?
I'm asking you to help us, if you wanna pay half of that, would be great. I'll take your recommendation, you making that in motion?
Well, you know, the county, county equipment all over the country, that ain't...
Yes, well, listen, the fire department works together. It's the first thing and the only thing that y'all do together. And I, I know, no offense, but I think you get, you don't get a lot of, a lot of complaints about the fire department in, in general, so, I think we're doing a pretty good job. We're together, the city and county, but, uh, it don't matter if you, you work, you're a firefighter, dentor, or wherever, everybody works together, it's one team doing the job, so...
But really and truly, nothing against you, Mr. Chief, but really and truly, they need to take some of that down, or more money than they owe us, and just pay for this.
Well, I can't answer that.
I know that, I understand that.
That's not my department, I'm, I'm just have, I, I will, I will defer to somebody else on that, if you don't mind. I have, I have a fire department, you may, but that's, that's the part I wanna get.
Well, we got our equipment on it, so... So, uh, and, but I do still say that the building does belong to the city. So, with that, I would, I would like to make a motion that we pay a third of it.
My second. Got a motion, second, here in discussion? No? Twenty-five hundred, sure. Over twenty-two, seventy, seven...
Over seven thousand dollars.
Little over seven thousand dollars, seven, ninety-two-one.
That suit your job?
I'm just here asking. I took your motion over that, but I'm, I'm fine, that's, that's okay.
Let's see.
Seventy-six hundred and something.
Seventy-four, forty-three.
Seventy-four, forty-three? Are you sure?
That's what I got, what I sticks.
Ben, how about, Ben, Jerry, make sure we get it that right, we won't go over there.
Twenty-nine, four, forty-three. Twenty-two thousand, three hundred, twenty-nine dollars, is this?
Yes, it's four, forty-three. Forty-three.
Forty-three. Okay, thank you.
I, I'll give you a smell, I'd like to give you an update on the West Mill Fire. Since we have access involved with that, I'd like to just, real quick, give you an a, update on it. At present, we have the mobile command and two pieces of equipment down there, uh, well, actually, three pieces of equipment. Two engines, an engine attack of a brush truck in mobile command. The mobile command is down there probably for at least fourteen days, but not longer. And one of the reasons why we went down there is because we have some capabilities, some of the other mobile commands that the state don't have. Uh, we are swapping crews about every forty-eight hours, and they consist of city firefighters, they can't have firefighters, so there's bug, they're down there. Uh, the crews are switching, switching, it's not matter of fact, we'll switch again probably Saturday or Sunday, sometimes Sunday, probably. This has been, this has been federally, it has been declared by the governor, it's probably gonna get declared by President Trump, as soon as he signs his conundrum on it, then, then actually, we will recoup our money. So, we will actually get back the cost of our firefighters, what we pay them, uh, and also, there'll, there'll be a premium for each piece of equipment we got, we got now, it's like thirty dollars an hour for each piece of equipment out there. Each of those fall into different categories, so they, so there is, there is some funding that will be available, to the federal government, we'll get that back now.
Y'all get to come home Saturday, come race there.
That's right, I think so. I think it went from eighty to sixty, and there's one thing that you're not, you don't know about fire, but it makes us on weather, and it actually can push some of this out of the way, so, uh, they're not jumping up and down and saying, we're, we're through. Uh, so, uh, the one thing about the money, I'll tell you, everybody needs to know this, they don't start calculating this stuff till the event's over with, this event could possibly go on to November. So, we may not see this fund until later, but once, once the event's over with, they start putting the numbers together, and it'll come to Gina, Gina will break it down with us, it'll take time.
City and county quit, or city quit?
Both, or city and county, so, uh, so, so both are getting, both are getting opportunity down there, and both are gonna get funded. So, basically, you, you, you end up making money, because they put all the fuel in there, and they take care of it now, they're saying, all these people's going down there, you get a, you get money back, or so you, uh, I won't say you make money, but you, you get money to help you with repairs, maintenance, insurance, things like that, so, it'll be able to...
Anything, yeah.
Yes. There's over seven hundred personnel down there, that's, uh, about a hundred, the last shot was about a hundred and forty-five thousand acres. Uh, and it is actually, when I talked to them all ago, the, the, it has started coming towards St. George, and that's where they're at, and they told me they had smoke coming over at the time. Uh, that was probably, uh, a few missed, or meetings, and send me a tape, so, after me, I'll find out, but it, they're afraid that within the next few days, it could come through the, the city of St. George. So, uh, that's not gonna be good. It's, St. George, if you've never been, it's not much bigger than Graham, it does have a school in it, and it has one store, but, I mean, there's a lot of houses down there, and that's what we're being doing, is protecting all of them, so...
Thank you, Mr. Little. Next, Bruce Johnson, discuss improved regulations, department utilizing pro program and bid for fire codes.
Good evening. How you guys doing tonight?
Yeah, doing good.
Let's go and talk about, um, let's talk about the fire stuff first, and I'll, I'll introduce Sarah, let her come up and give them a reference, very expertise. But, um, on the fire code, you know, we need to be up code out there on the, in our concession stand and stuff, that we, we gotta have fire hood, exhaust in it, and ways, it means of egress. You know, we talked about it with Gary when he was here, and stuff like that, and I mean, Brad was on the, the redwood acres and stuff. But we gotta get up the code on the, for our concession, for our, the fire codes, and for the egress, that means bank, uh, ways to escape from upstairs and all that, we gotta have another way, we gotta have at least two. Can I say that about Charles? Gotta have at least two, two means of escape. Everything's in this place right here, this bid, this, this, it was in your packet right there, except the, um, fire suppression unit and all that, other than that, I, I stated, this gonna cost you about four thousand dollars, too. The lady was supposed to send a bid, it was gonna happen, and so she had to send a bid, so she, she's supposed to be back first next week. This is in from all six, our, our department down there.
You just got one bid, so we got?
Yes, you know what I mean, 'cause that's, that's, that's pretty strange stuff right here, I mean, 'cause sheet metal companies, now, they really don't do this, and they, there is one sheet metal company in here, um, on the means of egress, uh, for getting a way to escape out of there, that's quality machine. And college sheet metal workforce doing the school over here, they, uh, they gave us a bid, too, for, for the hood, for, for, for it, and then putting that suppression hood, and stuff like that.
He's doing this, Charles?
Yes, it's gotta be done, we need up the code.
I was out there with State Farm office when we put this... Yeah, if we don't do this, there's a big liability, we've got to get this done.
Definitely looking, think we can do this, through spots on...
Through the spots, for, you mean, capital, of course, I know, I know, line out the capital proven, it's gone now, right? I know, Department has capital proven.
Have you put that out, to the local machine shop?
I put it out.
Just stairways and stuff like that, I know Conley, you know, it's, it's hard times, if I do, uh, when somebody, you know, somebody has to put it in as part of expression, and all, as far as staircase, I don't know. We probably give all our local, you know, if you wanna use a machine shop to do it, then probably...
I mean, I, I think only probably there, that's, that's quality machine, too, they, they, they get them.
Yeah, that's the point.
On it, yeah, I have it.
Yeah, we need to give all local vendor a chance, but, but, I mean, we need to go there and do it, if it's be done.
Yes, gotta be done, I mean, 'cause like I say, I'm pushing, I got a district attorney, and a state attorney coming in here, and I don't want somebody walking in on me by here, saying, yeah, shut the door.
Yeah, we go ahead and let them do it.
You think you can make sure they quote the same thing that you think that...
Oh, yeah, I can do it, I can, I'll wait it out there, you know, just don't give them a bid, and just just hold them, and get them to come out and give you a bid.
Okay, I hear a motion, definitely go ahead and let him do that, and go ahead and get started on it, once you're done. Hear a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion clear. Thank you, Mr. Little.
I'm gonna introduce this, uh, Bureau of Inspector Secretary, Mr. Harrison Miller, Mrs. Sarah Clayton. And she's gonna talk about a red through our software, for online registration, to help us put it dead and stuff, and all that, so we lose a lot of revenue, probably for, for, for...
That's good, that's good.
The car's white. Do all that, with me.
Um, with the packet, maybe that's like, and it, you'll see that it has, um, active registration, which includes online registration and in-house registration. Payment processing, facility reservations, point of sales that is defined for concession stands. The program is also mobile friendly, and it can be easily shared on our Facebook page, so they can, families can go to our page and just click on it, and it'll take them directly to the site, so they can register their kids that way. I've done a lot of the webinars and the demos with several different programs. This one is the most user-friendly, not just from our side, but as a parent also. It's pretty much self-explanatory how to go on there and register your child, if you want, if they chose to do it online at home, instead of coming into the office. And the, the program also provides data reports, which none of the other programs done that. It, anything that we put in there, it'll provide us with a chart of, you know, where we're gaining, where we're losing, and pretty much anything we put in there, it generates a report for us. Um, it also gives, we have, the way I understand it, it's twenty-four-seven support team and maintenance. Um, if something goes wrong within the program, we can call them at any time, and they will help us fix it. If we can't fig, figure it out, through the funnel will come out and help us fix the problem. If we can't figure it out, through the funnel will come out and help us fix the problem. Um, in order to have the point of sales in the concession stand, we do have to have internet access in the concession stand. We can do it one of two ways, we can do it through an Android tablet, through Verizon, and we can run it through the, the tablet, which we could also take out to the three forty-one fields when we're out there with football. Um, or we can just have internet ran to the concession stand and have a, a direct connection.
Again, what would be is modes, it would be on those spots.
Uh, the first year is the most expensive, but that's because you've got your, your online training and the setup fees, all that, and then it goes down after that. We do have to use Forte Card Processing Company, who they use, that's who they recommend we go through. Um, there's a five-dollar monthly statement fee, and they get two-point-five percent of the process, or, you know, the process will be. But other than that, that's pretty much, pretty much it. If we go with the tablet, we don't have to buy the register, the, the program can be downloaded to the tablet. Um, if we decide to put internet into the concession stand, then we have to pretty much use their equipment from there. Uh, the card terminal, they said that we have to get that through Forte, um, because it's programmed, I guess, for their company.
Basically, it's just their, their software operating, stuff like that. I mean, you hear a lot of people come in, like, they all the time talking about, I mean, people just use the card all the time, they wanna use the card, and then forest possession sales and other thing out there. All folks, I mean, you hear them turn around, they turn away kids all the time because I don't have no money, ain't got nothing on my card. And you hear all the time, I wish y'all would do that, you know what I mean? And the surrounding counties, I mean, she didn't mention it, but they, they go over this, and it's really up there, registration, I mean, it, it keeps us from being bombarded about last day too, people hold them for a dollar, and they go ahead and put it out there.
Guess my only concern is, is this, if you're not buying this, you're leasing this for forty-eight hundred dollars a year, and it can go up ten percent, you know, says there, I don't know, it's not free.
Yes, sir.
So.
With every program that's, though, you can't buy the program, you need to get into that, you can't buy the program.
Is that what you wanna do, is lease it?
Can't buy, none of that.
This is pretty much the standard?
Yes, sir.
It is.
I mean, that's just a forty-eight hundred dollar expense over here.
I mean, you want to budget it every year at least, uh. I mean, the first five years, it should drop after the first, first judicial paper, you know, first year, it should go down for four years, and then, then make no change, you know? That's what the guy told us on the phone.
Don't think y'all lose forty-eight hundred dollars worth of stuff like that?
Probably do. I mean, it just, I mean, forest abuse, premium, I mean, forest registration, making it convenient, all of the perfect stuff like that.
Just having the card machine would help tremendously. I mean, I had people come in there all the time with their debit cards, and I had to send them back out, and they'd go to the bank, get the money off the card, come back. Because I don't, I don't have a way to take the card.
Make up, I mean, that. Well, I, I guess I would listen to this, like, I thought, you know, we talked about it, I thought it'll make a fifty-eight hundred dollars where it was, I thought that's what it was.
One-time people, I'm not saying that.
I know, it's not a one-time.
So, annual. I, I, I know this probably isn't gonna meet all these needs, this is, but, you know, a lot of your Chamber of Commerce and other folks like that do the exact same thing for the exact same reason. You know, they got a twenty-nine dollar, twenty-nine and a half dollar ninety-five cent square chip in your phone, is that?
And, and honestly, I'm, I'm fine with that, if we can just at least get the card thing, and we can get it set up, where we can take it at the concession stand and in the office. I don't care to keep doing what I, you know, the way I'm doing it, it doesn't bother me, it's just the, I think it would be a lot better if I take the card.
On platform. Five, five, and I thought we'd get assisted, but this is.
This is the least.
Yeah.
Least, uh.
What about ATM machine now?
We're all gonna be broke here a couple times.
You can do the card machine without going through this whole program, there was another one, um, company that I thought should call it just the card machine. And pretty much, it's just paying that five-dollar monthly fee and a two-point-five percent. We just had to set up our own, or set up an account, or you do it, I don't know, how are you gonna do it? But the money goes into that account, and then, at the end of the month, they take their fees out of that same account every month, and they mail us a statement.
Set up what they have.
Mm-hmm.
Can I make this recognition, I mean, if we just, um, try it for a couple of years and then take, and if it don't work, go back, and we can always go back. I mean, just to see where we're at.
Just according to what you have, I mean, you have for using cards, that's one thing, if you have for all these other things, and all, all these bells and whistles, that's what you're paid for. And it, it keeps you out of cash, and you ain't gotta worry about the traceability and stuff like that, but forty-eight hundred bucks, you fifty-eight hundred, then forty-eight, then forty-eight, that's just a lot of money. And you get, they won't come running for you for that. For concession.
You do. I mean, a lot of registration is.
But I would say, I mean, and I would agree, go ahead and get the card, anytime you need that. We need to put on that.
Okay, I hear motion.
But I mean, I can say a motive is, I just.
Let us, let us check this out a little bit more.
If you need a card thing now, get it. I'll make a motion before I take it.
What about the internet access portion?
We have to, we have to have internet access in the concession stand to do that, so. Can we just do like a Verizon tablet and a square? To do that?
Well, there's no way we do that, I mean, the county's got, they got a hotspot that you can unlock.
But how do you wanna get that?
You can do that on the.
No, we're gonna have something to do it on.
You won't, won't we just? Table it, let us check it too, what we do need to do.
When do you need some, I mean, I know you need some, but when, when is, I mean, when do you absolutely need?
Now.
We got, we got registration going on, of course, we just come out of registration, but you go in the soccer registration.
But I'm talking about.
Oh, this is, this is, I mean, concession is, is June, about June the twenty-second.
You can get them a little pump box it down, you can just have the internet, and carry it, and be able to communicate, not follow the phone.
But what are you gonna plug the machine into, that's what I'm saying about it, you know, like a tablet just for that, so they can plug it into, because not everybody has the cell phone out there.
That is, it's tablet, and we'll figure out, we, we gonna, we gonna do some, we gonna, we gonna do some, just let it figure out.
Uh, I hear a motion, tablet. Not that we're more information. And if you will, y'all look into it as well, and see what you can come up with, it would be good. Quick as you can.
Take it through the ride, really quick.
Uh, any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good luck, guys.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Next is EMS Director Ronnie Jones, to discuss first, from the credit card system, discount and approved EMS pay rate for next voting year. Okay, Mr. Ronnie?
How are we all now?
Just fine, I'm too good, yeah.
Over the last few weeks. I've called some surrounding counties and done some periodic price comparison, and, uh, the sheet that I'm handing out is, is what the EMS directors at these services give me, of what the, what the medics in their, in their offices make me. And it was hard to find any paramedics in these surrounding counties. They had been employed for twenty years, much less, over twenty years. So, there's not many, there's not many price comparisons to, to go by for a twenty-plus-year employee, for.
You're gonna put that on there, don't you?
Sir?
Let y'all use service on there.
I will. Well, I can.
Can you tell us?
Yes, sir.
How old are you?
Twenty-eight years of, of involvement. Roger Ogleman, twenty years. Ricky Minns, ten. Dale Chambers, ten. Edwin Williams, two.
How many?
Two. Ellen, five. Shay and Jimmy just started this, this year.
But Jimmy had been with you before, right?
Jimmy had been with me before. And he, he went to, uh, to Vidalia.
How many years they got?
For money. I'm not, I'm not sure what Jimmy's got total, to be honest with you, he, uh, he's been, he's been a paramedic probably somewhere around, total around fifteen, sixteen years. These, uh, positions that you see out beside our names, back several months ago when ACCG come in and done the, uh, assessment. Uh, these, the training officers, what they, uh, in the recommendation said we had to have, uh, Medicare compliance officer and a, and a hip officer. So, these, these employees have been doing these jobs since the assessment team left with no, uh, with no benefit as far as, as far as the pay rates. Our last administrator said that we was in the middle of a year and didn't have the money budgeted, and that he would work with me at the end of the, on this upcoming budget, so.
Why don't you let us, uh, look over?
Yes, sir.
And see, and see what we can come up with when we start working on the budget, and give you a definite answer a little later.
Yes, sir. I've got, I've had, since we went to the new building company, um, I've had several patients come in to, to pay their bills, and, and they asking about a, a discount, if they paid it in full. Jeff Davis County don't offer any discounts for, if you pay your payment in, in full, your annuals, we, uh, and I've come to y'all tonight to, to see if there's any way that we could help, uh, these patients with, if they willing to pay their eighteen hundred or two thousand dollar EMS fee, or whatever, you know, whatever it is, if they willing to pay it in full within thirty days of service, could we, uh, could we help them and give them a, a ten percent discount?
Is that what the hospital was?
Hospital's fifteen.
They do, other counties does this.
Right. They, I've, all the several counties, they, most of them is around ten to fifteen percent is, is the goal, is what they, is what they pretty much say, so.
I would agree with the ten myself, unless they pay with credit card, we would have to figure out the cost of the, what the credit card companies gonna charge on that card, whether it be two percent, some of them five percent.
Right, can you say?
Maybe we fix them.
They fix the star.
Since birth.
Exactly. You may next week.
He's come up here before I did, and it's a forty-eight hundred dollar fee per, per year. But, and he's got more money than I got, I'll take the terminal off his forty-eight hundred dollar fee.
Well, hostile, then you go cash, well.
There's a few. In the, since we went to this new, new EMS building company, there's a good bit of patients that's come by and wanting to pay with a debit card. We do not have any, any way to, uh, to accept a debit card or credit card payment. So, we need to, we need to look in, and I know y'all paid them, uh, brushes once ago, and that's, we need to look into it, see what the best way to, uh, to do it for, for both departments.
We sure do. We definitely need it here in the courthouse, because people do come by with debit cards, and it's gonna get more and more.
Right.
We'll definitely look into that. What about the ten percent discount?
Except with credit card?
Except, that's right, you have to take off, if they two and a half percent or five percent charged on the credit card, you need to take that off the ten percent.
Only get seven and a half or what?
Right. Right now, is it just ten percent cash or?
Yes, sir, if.
What do you take a credit card?
If I, if I rise to check, it'd be ten percent, but if it's, um.
If and when we're able to take credit card, we will take credit card fee off of it.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion on that card. I make a motion to give a ten percent discount on cash, and if and when we take credit cards, to, to take that proceeds off of the ten percent.
I second.
Credit card fee?
Of the credit card fee, yes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Cook in here? Let's see him. He's not really here, I'm hearing the twenty-one. Okay, uh, Mr. Haycock, discussing free cleaning service.
I have some discussions with the folks around here, we really have nothing in writing, uh, as far as what the twenty of the folks were doing, or the standard of their work, while it's basically just clean courthouse and all buildings. So, in order to get something right in for two reasons, to protect the folks that are cleaning, and also to give us some accountability to hold to. In addition to that, it, uh, came out at that same time that, um, in January, February of two thousand fifteen, we were paying twelve hundred or a thousand and twenty-four some odd dollars to have the courthouse cleaned up. Presently, we are paying six hundred some odd dollars to have the exact same scope of work, pretty well done. Don't know how that happened, don't know why it happened, uh, the, the best answer I could get was they were paying three individuals, one of the individuals quit, so the other two individuals started getting their money and never asked for any more. So, uh, with that, I would like to propose that this scope of work is what we think needs to be done, in addition to, we have added cleaning, tax commissioners, area glass, front counters, where everybody touches, it's standardized. Add that to the list also, if with folks that are gonna be doing cleaning, and, uh, pay them a fair wage to do it, which in my recommendation would be around a thousand bucks a month. I don't think you'd allow soliciting a big cleaning contractor to do it, because I've discussed the work too, I think for about six, seven, eight, nine, uh, about five outbuildings, and, uh, so.
They're not people that do that.
They're having to go out, it's not gonna be two people anymore, it's gonna be one individual plus, she's gonna have to pick up some help, and the other ladies quit. So, she's basically gonna have to hire some people, that may be three, four, I don't know, but it doesn't matter. Uh, and it doesn't matter whether there's five cleaning days in a month, or four cleaning days in a month, it's still flat rate. So, whether they act on five times, four times, whatever. So, that was kind of my recommendation, I would, um.
You make a motion, then?
I make a motion, we accept this scope of work for a thousand bucks a month.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor of that? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Our next one is, uh, Mr. Johnny Benjamin, that's just courthouse AC unit, and I think, Mr. James, we've got some bids on that AC, we've got an AC that's, that's Pentor for a while, and I think it's a ninety-four or ninety-five model, and we're gonna consider either taking it or trying to buy a new unit, and we have, didn't we have some bids turning in on that?
Well, we might have, we'll see what we got here. Well, we might have, we'll see what we got here. As dull as it can be, I mean, I think it's bad, look at it. This is some comfort zone. This is just a replaced, uh, compressor, it's sixteen hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Sixteen eighty-seven, twenty. This and there, some heating, comfort zone, heating and air, why this supposed to be the compressor, I mean, the, the new unit? Let's see what we got. Yeah, it cost like a new unit, forty-six hundred and fifty dollars. Four tonner. Four tonner York. This is Mr. from, we toward the thing here, I think it's got them here, air pro heating and cooling. This one is, this is just a compressor, with one year warranty, it's two thousand and forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. This is also just for, for a compressor, it's fourteen fifty-five.
What was expert air?
Yes, isn't that crazy?
Why you're at the other two didn't quote?
I don't think they could, I, I talked to Mr. Jerry and I don't think they could find that unit. Haven't found that unit yet.
The forty-six fifty unit, what type of unit was that, what type?
Forty-six, I'm gonna say York.
How many seers?
It's just got the mall that don't say that. I think what we really need to do is table, and let's get to Mr. Jerry, and, uh, he said this was, uh, he told me, I thought he told me in ninety-five, he told me today, I asked him, and he said this air conditioning unit was put in in ninety-four.
I remember what.
That's what I say, I hate to spend fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars on a compressor when something else is gonna be going right back at the back.
I would think we could get three, three possible bids.
Yeah, we need three bids, but we need them, we need to tell them what seer, we need an arithm, you can, you can get, I mean, arithm...
You can get two different tier in them things and you, they got about three different grades, and if you don't get the highest sufficient, you're gonna pay for it in curve. So I think we need to get back to Mr. Jerry and let's see if we can, see if, I'd rather have a new one personally myself, we'll do whatever y'all want to do.
But debt's not price, I would say we need to get bids on that.
Okay. Nick, can they make a motion then?
I make a motion that we, uh, put out bids for a, a new unit, not a Texas unit.
Okay, then. Second.
Sir.
Any discussion? All vote? Motion carries. Thank you, y'all. Our next one is, I had this senior citizen, item fourteen, on the agenda to approve or deny purchase of a new or used senior citizen van. The one they got that they haul the meals with, uh, the air conditioner, they had to put a new unit on it last year, didn't last no time, and, uh, it's, uh, it's wore out, I think it's twenty something years old, and it's just, well, it ain't worth just keep putting money in. And I don't know, I don't know if we could stand a brand new one right now, but I did check around on a couple of prices on some vans and I found a, a two thousand and five with a hundred and eighteen thousand miles for, I believe it was thirty-nine, thirty-five or thirty-nine hundred dollars. And they also got a, had a Ford van and they had a oh-six Kia, and I think it was wanting sixty-five for it. Uh, what are y'all, what are y'all suggesting on it? We definitely got to do some more, because they can't haul the meal when it gets a hundred degrees and that's health issue, you can't be hauling them meals around and make somebody sick, so we definitely need to, to look in and get some.
So you think we can get probably used ones, right?
Personally, I really don't know how many miles, I wish to ask them, how many miles they usually go a year, put on one a year, and then I might need to go back to them and ask them because I don't, I think it just run mostly around town, you know, they got thirty-seven stocks, I think thirty-seven stocks, exactly.
From them prices that you've given us, I mean, I...
Thirty-nine hundred for a oh-five Ford and a oh-six, I looked at both of these, both of them look good, both of them they said had around a hundred and eighteen thousand miles, and a oh-six Kia for sixty-five.
You want to continue looking and just, if you think a used one's gonna work, let's just make a, a, a motion for a, a certain amount, not go over that.
Why don't we, why don't I do this, let me see how many miles roughly they put on one a year. And, and we...
I think the van they got is about two oh two.
Yeah, it'll probably be used, but...
I think so. But I think it's pretty cheap.
Because they won't get by with a useful one, you might as well go with a dollar one, so you can go ahead and look for it.
Okay, then, y'all.
You wanna, can we go up to ten five or something like that? Since he's got that six thousand and four thousand dollar price. I make a motion that we buy a used van and we go up a lot up to ten five dollars for purchase. Leave it to the President's Chairman.
Okay, then.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? What I'm gonna do first, I'm gonna ask, ask you over there and check and see how many miles that they put on one a year, and if it's a lot of miles, sure enough, we might need to consider another.
That's a good idea, okay.
Right, okay.
And I just, if, if, where you can, you can go proceed, what?
Okay, uh, thank y'all. Item number fifteen, to approve or deny repairs on, to the dump truck, and that's the dump truck that we got over at the road department, the motor, y'all heard Mr. Robert, and we're gonna go ahead and try to get that moving forward because we need it so bad, and he gave us a rough estimate here, so I need to, uh, motion to go ahead and spend six thousand dollars, what y'all think, and let's move forward on it, get it going.
Well, that's why it's gonna be less than ten, I would make a motion to stand up twelve thousand dollars, I would, if it's worth that.
Just worth a thing. Uh, any motions, second motion? Any other motion, please, second.
Second.
Uh, thank you. Any discussion? Is it okay with everybody? All vote? Motion carries. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. Okay, the next on the agenda is Ms. Lucy, approve or deny forward glasses for Lucy T. Martin, can I have your name?
Yeah, Martin, I would give it to her.
I'll bet it easy. Derek, start trying it before y'all say anything to me. Um, for the Alma Highway, um, I was here on Pacific, but we figured, we found the Alma Highway, pickles, the old pickles place, we figured since the Civic Center needs, uh, overhaul, it's a Facebook, and, you know, as I said, I wasn't in last time, um, Joe brought it to my attention that there was, Joe, right? Said it brought it to my attention, and he called me in for a meeting and said we needed, uh, names and, and numbers so people can get ahold of us, even if it's for advertising to rent the place out. Since that day I left, August thirteenth, we called everybody and canceled everything. Reason why is because I was in Chicago. I don't want nothing rented here, we're gonna have to wake you up at one o'clock in the morning. So, I can't, I know, I told you last time we won't wake you up, but I came here and I'm gonna move here in June because our businesses are gonna be here. Now, we are running a fast food, sit-down dine-in, kind of, uh, rock and roll, you know, the theme style, um, so we thought we upgraded a little bit and bring up, bring hot dogs, hamburgers and sell beer and wine, think of like a family kind of thing, you wanna come have a hot dog and a cold beer, you're welcome to it, um, and we thought, working on the Pacific Center, we'll do that as we're having the Mama Lucys support Pacific Center to upgrade it for future. So, um, you know, just something innocent, we're not asking you to give us, we gotta swear, I'm asking you to no budget from a credit card, we wanna give you money, so we would like to see if you guys can all favor of that beer and wine. And I know it's a dry county move liquor, so it's just beer and wine and I know not to sell them on Sundays.
Did you, did you, did you qualify for all you, did you make all your recommendations off the criteria, did you meet, did you, to run all that?
No music, curious lives.
No music.
You know you're in another residential area.
Only music that we have is a little bit topped over the, just, you know, you said, but it's gonna be like rock and roll music, you know, some mix of everything, uh, um, we're planning on Saturdays, uh, between twelve and three to make events with teenagers, I mean, I'm sorry to say, but I don't see anything happening this time and I want it to happen, I wanna bring some, you know, uplifting, so bring the family out to have a good time on, on weekends, and we're gonna have like, um, watermelon eating contest and we might have a mechanical bull out there and, so we're trying to make it, you know, for the family and the kids will be allowed to with their parents. That not only be Saturday, but we'll be able to make money, thank you for Sunday.
Okay, I hear a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? You do know that now the F B code is eight to twelve o'clock?
Yes, we're only open till ten.
Only open till when?
Ten.
Ten?
Because you guys close up, and, and it's not, it's the, the Alma Highway, not the Civic, so, you know.
Yeah, it's not the old F B club anymore, that's what we, we had our discussion about. I thought it was important we had to have a club, you know.
Okay.
So I said, see, you know, qualify for you to, uh, it's something that would help the kids and...
It's a family environment, so...
Family environment, so it's bringing jobs and, and other business here, I'm all for it.
Okay, vote? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The name of it's gonna be Mama...
Mama Lucys too, I have a Mama Lucys in Chicago, uh, hot dogs, that...
Are you Mama Lucys?
Yes. Everybody gotta have a big Mama, they're down there.
This is, I don't know, what, always, always this?
Yes. And your hot dogs are not cold, but I don't know, Sherry gets microwave in here, obviously. And they're different, they're not the same hot dog you'd find at Burger King or anywhere. These are different, I use Chicago style and New York style, these are just main style right now, and then the big quarter counter one.
Like pine style?
They're, 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 um, these are not the, I didn't decorate them or anything, so we have, I use the tomatoes there, you're welcome to it.
Thank you, guys. Uh, item number seventeen?
Yes.
Right, that's not the sheriff, your sheriff's just sitting up there.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, enjoy your hot dogs.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, let's go, may we go? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number seventeen, approved.
Thank you, everybody.
Vales rate increase, they have fifty, they want to go to sixty-five, and we do have it, the money and the verdict to do that. Is that correct, and I leave that?
Is that like per day or?
How, 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 per day?
Per day.
Right.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Did you say fifty to sixty-five?
Right, fifty to sixty-five. Thank you. Our next agenda is to approve or deny Blue Cross and Blue Shield Health Insurance Contractors Renewal, sub, so that's time of the news, and, did y'all look at the package, did y'all look at it?
That was heavy.
Same, yeah.
I make a motion we approve it.
Vales rate did increase?
I heard that.
Another plan, better hurry up, second. Any discussion? All vote? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next one is to approve, item number nineteen, on the agenda, to approve or deny James Thompson contract for the yard maintenance. Mr. James, you want to come up?
Name James Thompson, Jimmy, I run top of the yard care, y'all have a packet. Well, we got, when I talked with the administrator before, what we did when we first came here, the place was a mess. We first started off with the concerted services building and it was like weeds and trees and everything that was blowing up, it was in a total wreck, so, what I did, I came in at wreck, uh, over there at the concerted services, I cut down trees, I cut them heads, I pulled up bushes, I knocked dead stuff out and I cleaned it up. So once I got through with that, uh, the administrator was very pleased with it, so he said, well, come to the courthouse, so y'all have, uh, the thing is what we did for courthouse, so he said, well, look, so once I finished with it, I cut down stuff, cleaned up stuff and sprawled it and stuff and it was like a little less than nine hundred dollars. So he asked me then, at that point in time, would I consider keeping it up so it wouldn't get like this, so we had like fifty bay of pine saw that was stuck around the courthouse that was just sitting there, and we had to still work out the pantry, so I said, well, once we get it cleaned up, once you spend eight, nine hundred dollars on a building, I have a monthly plan, which I come in every month at this place and I walk it, I check for weeds, I check for, uh, trees growing up and whatever, and if something that needs to be done, then I do it. Like behind the, uh, boys building, there was a big old tree that was actually growing to the root of the, uh, the building, so I went to him, went to him and told him that they come down, because the ground is gonna break your, your foundation, so I did that. So what I do for my seventy-five dollars, I check the building and I make sure everything that can be done to make this building beautiful, is done. Now, what we did with the, uh, the senior citizen building is sixty dollars a month. Well, he was designing for sixty dollars a month because he thought sixty dollars a month was dead much for the little building. So for the sixty dollars a month, what I did, I came in, I pressure wash the building once a year, I do the signs, and I worked on, working on the bathroom, I hang signs up to have billboards that have been laying there for like eight months, I hang up the signs, I paint, I'm right now, I'm in the process of painting the bill, painting the sign, so that was cushioning the sixty dollars that I was making. But with the courthouse, it's a little different. With seventy-five dollars that I am doing at the courthouse, and what he said we would do is, we would look at the seventy-five dollars and see what, what could we do? We could, and I said, for seventy-five dollars, you're gonna get me here every month. But then, uh, that's, like the tree I cut down, the price didn't change, they didn't, they didn't change the check. That tree was like two hundred and fifty dollars getting cut down and hauled out, where that, still face of what I do at the end of the year or sometime during the year when I realize that the seventy-five dollars is not gonna be adequate for my service, what I do then, I come to whoever's in charge, which was Mr. Paul at the time, say, look at here, your bill is over, so you need to, uh, add an additional such and such a thing, not change the seventy-five, I'll just add like, when I, but I didn't do none for the trees, I didn't do none, I like, they, they never run the high condition, there's some trees that's about fourteen, twelve, fourteen foot high, I'm gonna cut them back. I was talking to one of the deputies and he said that there was some building, there was some trees around the courthouse that needed to be cut back because of the safety device, because the, the cameras weren't picking up in certain areas, like coming to the front door. I, I do all this stuff, they tell me something needs to be done, that's what I do, but then the seventy-five dollars, it don't take long to keep it up when you doing additional work plus, I come every month. So, Mr. Paul and I was gonna make adjustments that I did at the, uh, senior citizen building, but the senior citizen building, they didn't need sixty dollars for, per month, and that's why I pressure washed it, that no cost, and I didn't even charge off a bleach, so it's like, what I understand, no cost, and at the end of the year, I think it's gonna work itself out, and then I do whatever needs to be done, I was gonna help with the bathroom, but they said that Mr. Wood was taking care of that at this point in time, so I do whatever they need to have done. At the courthouse, it's different, plus, your heads has gotta be cut so often, now I don't change the seventy-five dollars per month, but once it gets up to a point where I'm looking at seventy-five dollars, January, February, March, April, May, and by June, July, I'm like, three hundred dollars in the hole, and I'm gonna come when you guys say, look at here, I got X amount of work to do, I still got crate my re-cut, I still got this book, and we already have three hundred dollars over the seventy-five dollars, because I can't work for free, but the seventy-five dollars get me here, make sure that the problem that y'all had before I got here, don't happen again, and y'all won't have to spend eight, nine hundred dollars on something to get it beautified, I will make sure that grass and everything is done, so, my thing is every so often I may come to Mr. Paul and say, look at here, this thing is getting a little overhand, over, out of hand, so I need you to maybe kick in a hundred dollars this month to, to cushion the bill, and then something like that, like when the crate runs... And then something like that, like when the crane runs, it takes about, it's gonna take about a half day to cut, cut crane mowers. Well, I may go to him and say, look at here, I need you to maybe kick in a hundred dollars for crane mowers because it's gonna be more than seventy-five dollars. But the seventy-five dollars gonna get me here twelve months out of the year. And it takes me about thirty to forty-five minutes to walk it and clean it. Anything that I purchase, you guys pay for, and I notice like we spray sometimes around the edges of the concrete, especially over here. Mr. Paul, Mr. Johnson was supposed to be giving us some spray, but I have my own spray, so sometimes I may just spray it, the flower beds, we spray them about every other month to make sure the weeds out of it, and that's something that we supposed to be putting, uh, supplying, but because I got a black pipe spread, I got my own spray, I just spray it, so... That is something that, but every so often, the bill is going to actually get up higher, because those trees, it's gonna take about a couple hours to clean them. And, and one of the deputies is there, coming out of that building right there going down that hallway, you can't even see the door. I don't know what building that is. I think that's the building when you get the pesticide license, and the trees is like five foot too high. And I know that's set there for the air condition, but it's a safe to have. So, and you can't see with that, with that particular camera that's coming down, so... And, and also that river birch, it's got like nine big limbs, and if you look at it, eventually it's gonna have, bucket cut's gonna have to be cut out. Because every time we come, it's limbs, and you got dead limbs in that river birch that's gonna have to be cut. My job is to tell you what you need, and for the seventy-five dollars, I'm gonna make sure that I be here cleaning up, but I don't want it to get, at the end of the year, where I'm seven hundred dollars in the hole, because then I have to quit. But I don't wanna do that. I want us to, I'm busy, and I will, but I want to be able to say, hey, look at here. Oh guys, it's getting out of hand, so I need y'all to kick the extra hundred dollars in, I need this, uh, but I'm leaving that up to you guys, but... Right now, the trees are all, we're, I'm about two hundred dollars behind the eight ball, which is not a big deal, because come, come June, July, all we got to do is, that magnolia tree, we got to cut it up because it's down about five foot, so people are gonna run into it, so we got to get it up, so... There are a lot of little stuff that's gotta be done, so, uh, I will not be able to stick with the seventy-five dollars. We don't wanna stick with seventy-five dollars, but at some time, you're gonna have to say, hey, uh, we're gonna have to kick up something to keep the building, and I promise you, it won't never get back like it was. Everything that needs to be cut, at the point in time it needs to be cut, I will cut it. And I will keep it clean and I will tell whoever's in charge, whoever my boss name, I will come to them to have a look here. You know, right now, the magnolia tree's gotta be cut, no question about that, because it's too low, and somebody gonna come in and come hit them in the face and then they're going to lawsuit. I wasn't at bank for twenty-two years. I know what happened when people went in the limb and they act like this, the bank's fault. I wasn't there for twenty-two years, I know what happened, so...
Can I, so, so the seventy-five dollars a month, you're not providing, uh, what are you, are you providing a monthly service where you're coming in and doing something for us every month?
Yes, sir.
Well, can you, to protect you and to protect us, and so that we know who's doing what, is there any way you could tell us what you're doing for seventy-five dollars a month? And then we ask you anything above and beyond that, you seek approval from the administrator prior to doing it?
Yes, that's what I, by management said.
Okay. So it shouldn't be any getting in the hole is what I'm getting at. So you get your money, when you spend your money, and therefore, because it doesn't... I reckon what I'm scared of in, in county government is owing somebody months and months down the road when it's all forgotten, then it's your word against somebody else's. So if we know exactly what you're supposed to be doing and you're seeking approval from the administrator sometime that works for us, then you're covered, we're covered, everybody's covered.
Okay, so let me explain to you what I do. I come in once a month, and for seventy-five dollars, I come on your premises every month. Okay, with this. Okay, I see what needs to be done every month. If it needs spraying, I will go to Mr. Paul and say, hey, it's time for this sprout. And then he would say, okay, because I don't do nothing beyond seventy-five dollars. But whatever, just come in. And then normally, if I don't do nothing, just come in and walk and do what I gotta do, normally it balances itself out. But because of the fact that there are jobs that gotta be done, I was going to Mr. Paul and I would say, hey, look at here, did I just call him and say, look at here, sixty dollars is too much for the, uh, senior citizen building, so he's, we gonna have to cut. Sixty dollars is my boss rate. I got twenty-two of these coming that I go every month. He says sixty dollars is too much. So I said, well, okay, can I pressure wash the building? Can I do the sign? Can I, uh, hang up the sign? Can I go talk to the ladies over the building? Can I see if there is anything in the building that needs to be done to keep the sixty dollars going, because it was? I was gonna end up on you guys two or three hundred dollars, because the sixty dollars is more, but that's my flat rate. I don't have a forty dollar rate, I don't have a thirty dollar rate. I just have a sixty dollar rate. I got twenty-two of these. And so, I, and I, and every, every month, I don't come to you and say, hey, look at here, I need forty dollars here, I need fifty dollars here. I was gonna let it go for a minute. And then, every so often, I will go to you and say, hey, look at here, I've been doing this and this and this, and that's like two hundred dollars. And you might say, okay, um, throw in a hundred dollars. And then at the end of the year, come December, then what we do, we call a balance. And what we do at the end of the year at the balance, what we do is, we take what I have done throughout the year, which I keep a, a record of, of what I've done throughout the year. I take seventy-five dollars from what I've done, and then I say, hey, this is what I've done, and this is where we at. And a lot of times, we don't swap that much money, but like time's slow, et cetera. So you won't have, the bill won't change every month. In other words, I won't come in here every month and say, hey, look at here, I need a hundred dollars. I won't, I won't come in here every month and say, hey, look at here, I need fifty dollars. I won't come in here every month, you will pay me the regular seventy-five dollars and at some point, and we may not never get even, like what I say, well, like he said, well, we owe you two hundred dollars. No, it won't ever be like that. But every so often, I like, because I like in January, December, and February, I like to there be a check, because that's why I do this. That's why my customers are willing, I don't have no money in November, because I am kinda cold, I can come to here and say, hey, look at here, can I pick that check up? And December, when I ain't got no money, no gas, I can come to you and say, hey, look at here, can I pick that check up? And January, when that doesn't grow, and I can come in and say, hey, can I pick that check up? And I got like seven hundred dollars checked I can pick up, and I'm like, oh, we, I can go back to doing business. So that's why I set this program up. So November, December, and January, and February, when I'm not making any money, I have income.
Money coming in.
So that is why, so the program is good. I got twenty-two people that love it, I got three more that we're negotiating with, so that's what I'm saying, so...
Well, it really looks good. You've done a good job. You have, and there's a lot of people come in, so I, I just want you to be covered and I still, so you do items one through six for seventy-five dollars as needed during the month?
I do what needs to be done during the month.
Oh, he's showing you what he done when he charged eight hundred something.
When I first came in. This is what it looked like when I first came in.
This is what all he did when he first come in.
He's over seven dollars. He said, he's doing whatever he's be doing.
So it don't get back, because you have to give me eighty, eighty dollars no more.
Does any trimming needs to be done? Does any pine probably needs to be cut? Does any edges needs to be done? Whatever.
He's praying.
Whatever our maintenance man had done, alright?
And he also says, just to create, I come in here, and if the grass hasn't been cut, I give you a price from the bottom for grass. You notice down here, there's the eighty-five dollars charged for grass, if, if you call me and say, I want the grass cut, so you have the problem.
I mean, I don't, Mr. James, I don't got no problem with this, but here's how I wanna do it. I don't mind doing the seventy-five dollar a month though. But the minute you see that you're going, that we get over, we need to know. Of course, you said that you was communicating with Gary, and he knows that.
Yes, sir.
So that, 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 but just don't let it, don't let the county owe you three or four hundred dollars. What I'm saying, the time you see, there's a dollar difference.
It's not, it's not gonna be that close, in other words, it's not gonna be like every month.
I know, I know that, but there's gonna be a time.
Yes, sir.
So let's, let's just pay it up as we go, what I'm saying. We'll pay the seventy-five a month.
Yes, sir.
But don't get, don't get a big silver, and also we owe you separate hundred dollars.
That's why, that's why I was coming to see who gonna, who gonna be my boss. Most time, I work at a lot of places, at Daisy Thompson, and I have a go-to guy that I can go to and say, hey, uh, Mr. Steve, or Mr. so-and-so, or Mr. so-and-so, I, I did such and such thing, and I need this, and they'll tell me. So that's what I was asking, if Gary's not here, if Mr. Paul's not here, so my thing is, who do I go to to say, hey? Because I can't just walk in and say, secretary, hey, I need a hundred dollars.
Right now, Mr. Wood's the chairman, so...
Okay, so...
So until we get somebody in that office, you, you need to ask him.
Okay, so I have a process, that's why I need to know who, because right now, all the magnolia trees gotta be cut. I'm gonna do what's gotta be done. I'm gonna keep the place, because I, I've got a lot of work from this. Matter of fact, I had a guy came out there the other day, just shook his hand, said, look at him. I'm very impressed, he's doing a fine job, and, and my boy makes us feel good, he just walked around checking all our hands, but I didn't help the courthouse. And we was like, okay, who's that? I don't know who he is, but hey, he did, I was supposed to do that, so... So I would give Mr. uh, Wood, and then we can...
And we owe you anything that I have, you can take. I'll make a mortgage, we'll take the seventy-five.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Got you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm pointing, approve or deny ER and, and refunds for the father. We'll take one at a time. So Patricia Renee Adams, refund of, uh, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. I think that was a boot cut, but...
That one, the damage at home, it was actually refunded.
Refund, right. Okay, I hear a motion. We do that?
I'll make a mortgage.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Uh-huh. Everybody vote?
Yeah, I do.
Our next one's Ray Wood, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventeen cent refund.
Yeah, we've actually paid him that one.
Uh, that's right, I got, you know, paper right here. Make the motion, second. All vote, motion carries. Next was Charles Rattle. It was just, uh, boot cut one. It's a air, it's a air.
Air.
And, you know, it'll all come to be air if you handle down. But okay, we have a motion on that. Charles Rattle, second. All in favor? Okay, the next one, same thing, Elizabeth Spelman.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Also, Brittany and Roger, Roger and Brittany and Brian.
Motion.
Motion, second. All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Also, Jack and Deborah, X, Tommy, senior, same thing, my next one.
I'll make the motion, second.
Jared, that one is a refund. Is that what y'all saying?
That last one.
Last one.
Is a refund.
It was added to homestead.
Added to homestead?
So this need to be a refund.
Okay, refund, the last, very last.
Uh, the diamond, some.
Alright, okay, I hear a motion to make the refund.
Any activation?
Alright, second. Second. Any discussion? Motion carries. I'm sorry about that, I had to hit it myself. Ready to get food. Uh, next, discuss newer old business, Mr. Teddy. There's one thing I want to mention, is, uh, from now on, we put in pipe, new pipe. What about just making them thirty foot at these right ways where we won't have no problem with that people? With these goof stack trailers and doulas, when they're coming out, horse trailers or anything else, and these long school buses, twenty foot type, you leave your pipe uncovered, is really not enough room to pull out. You got to pull out in the road and you get over across the yard line, and then you subject have accident, somebody run into you. So I think when we put in new, new driveway pipes, we need to go to thirty foot.
Normally have to leave that up to the homeowner's discretion, because they're paying for the pipe, they don't pay for it, they're the pipe, can't let horses put one in. I think that's probably a pretty good price.
If it's, if it's for the county, we definitely need to go. That's what, yes, the county. And we need to try to talk, everybody will, to put, I, I don't know, I always, when I put in a pipe, I always tell people, twenty foot is not long enough. Because what happens, your dirt washes away and then you ain't got nothing but a little lot, little bit of driveway. But we need to do it at county use period, I think.
I don't understand required me to have a thirty foot pipe, but, now that's the state, I don't know about the county, what they require, but they need to require it.
I would, I would make a motion on all county ones, that we did thirty foot and that we...
Try to encourage.
Suggest and encourage the public to do that.
We need to, but that one, I put in pipe before, I knew thirty, twenty foot is not long enough. Uh, have a motion, a second?
Say a motion.
Any discussion? Right, right name, motion, second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you.
I got some, what about, uh, the L I M A paving or whatever?
L would last, L leave?
L, L leave.
Whatever is, what would be going on, anybody know if they coming or when did that supposed to start?
Have we, have we got money yet on that?
Yeah, we got that, do that thing, then we got, uh, check received or something.
Check on that, and then, and then let's see if, go ahead and get all these.
I thought he said he was preparing, like, and then the hospital.
Well, hospital's...
This is... Uh, I said, I might need to just call him, check on that. Let me call him, check on that. I'll call him, I don't know.
We need to get some bids on, sprout, we'll be behind.
Yes, we do, terrible.
We do not have a lot of sprout.
We do.
Why do I go by getting signs?
Signs, just call the roof, Paul.
Hey, can we put that sign out there? Can we put the sign out there, remember the roof there?
Well, roof, no, just, you know, field state, but, it's kind of a hospital. Really get a dead inside in a sense, but, you know, if you got the arrow point, so you got the writing, you got the stripes. Keep from running off in the woods.
Just call the roof, Paul, tell him what you have signed, or, you know. Yeah, that'll be a problem. Any other discussion? No, I need a motion to go into thinking depression, discuss personnel.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All vote? Get ahead of it. Yeah, I need a motion.
Red, we'll start it down.
Need a motion to go back in?
I'll make a motion.
We, we discussed on personnel. All in vote. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Thank you, second.
All vote. We discussed on personnel, and just making our decisions on some, we did on some, so we got one for town, the maintenance at Town Bluff and, uh... Right, I need to make a motion, hire a maintenance man for Town Bluff.
I'd like to make a motion, we hire Greg Schell for Town Bluff Maintenance Man.
I'll say.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Thank y'all. Meet in the jury.
I just love it here for everybody. Everybody want a hot dog?
Reginald, I'll stick home with you. Reginald, try to take a home. Well, you've got been to get home now.
It won't be long.
Come on, look at her head. Come on, look at her head, all right?
Come on, Maggie, it's going.
That sounds kinda like a...
You a hot dog runner?
I don't eat hot dogs, thank you, Daddy.
I'm just eating the weenie.
I don't eat the weenie.
Oh. I don't eat the car, but I'm trying to stay off the bread.
Oh, bless your heart.
I ain't had a piece of white bread in forever. I mean, it's been a long time. Roger, you want one?
No, thanks.
Come on, get one.
I don't want any hot dogs, thank you, Daddy.
Come on.
Can you record, so this lady can see her, see her hot dog?
Yes, I can record while y'all eating your hot dogs.
Boy, he's the best hot dog I've ever had.